Call me in the order.
Coffee?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
McKinley?
Yes.
That story?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one public comment tonight. Scott from the White House. From here? Wherever you want.
Okay.
I submitted a bill for a water line that had ruptured at 508 West Clinton Avenue. That would be Woody's Restrikt. And if we had known the leak was coming, we would have asked. We would have gone to the proper channels to see if we couldn't get some TIP money to help us on that. So anyway, we would like for the city to help us with the TIP money for that cost. Questions?
So this was done in December?
Yes.
You did the work in December?
Yep.
Anybody have any questions?
I don't know about any question. I mean, I guess, I don't understand. I know that the proper process of TIP is to go through the committee and all of that. But what are we doing right now since we don't have a TIP committee?
Well, we're not doing anything yet. This is one of the first requests I've received since I've been here. I have another one coming down the pike, and I'm going to try to reconvene a committee.
What does, like, do we have, like, something that kind of lays out how we run the TIP? And how we're supposed to do this?
Yes.
Can we go retro on it? Like, in this case? I mean, just like to go back on a bill that's already been done? Because normally, TIP, you would have to ask ahead of time. But like, in a situation like this where it happened and they didn't realize, you know, they weren't expecting it to happen? Is that something that can be covered under TIP or no?
The work itself can be covered. It's the fact that TIP is a but-for statute, which means but-for TIP, which means money from TIP. It wouldn't, the project wouldn't happen. And so that's what TIP is for, is it's supposed to provide a gap when you can't afford something. It's not supposed to pay 100% of things. It's usually a percentage. In your policies, you have certain criteria for 10%, 20%, 30%, 40%, up to 50%. So the max is 50. And then it's supposed to go through the procedures, which I explained to Mr. Whitehouse, we haven't been using, and that's why I suggested he bring it to council. But because the money's already been paid out, that doesn't qualify for TIP. We also waived the $500 tap-on fee and helped dig the hole for the connection. So then there's soft costs of our time and labor. We also did replace and pay for his sewer line, I guess, last year or year before. So this is what I expressed to him, but I said you could bring it to the council. He never said yes or no. That's why he's not on the agenda. If you wanted to vote on it, we could schedule it for the fifth, but I'm just explaining it back.
All right.
But yes, you adopted policies that say it's supposed to go through a process, but in the process is percentage. It's supposed to be but-for. You know, it's supposed to be reimbursement. And actually, you actually call it reimbursement policy, which is but-for. I get that it was an emergency. So if you're inclined at all, I would suggest a percentage, you know, maybe 10%, 20%, up to 50%. So you just have to...
Is there anything that they need to fill out as far as the TIP forms?
Well, there's an application, but that's usually for consideration beforehand. You know, a couple pages about the project.
Sure.
Do we have anything within, like, whatever the, I don't know why, like, the word?
Policies.
Yeah, policies. Why the word doesn't even write it. That says, you know, anything that comes into play with TIP, like, if it were like an emergency situation like this, where they, like, something has come up and, you know, maybe, like, I mean, they have no choice.
No, I didn't see anything that's...
Fill out ones?
There's nothing in these policies that consider emergency.
Scott, I think I would fill out the paperwork, and then we can bring this thing back on the...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Unfinished business. Section 11, the consideration.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Call it.
Coffee?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
McKinley?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Section 2 is unfinished business. I believe we do. Section 3 is a new business ordinance resolutions for initial consideration.
Ordinance 997, amending Chapter 53, garbage and refuse. I may make a motion for ordinance 997, sorry. Amending Chapter 53, garbage and refuse.
Second.
Okay. Basically, what this is, as it's based on my memo, is when you adopted the residential contract, it kind of changed the landscape of the existing Chapter 53. So Joe and I worked on adopting language that would address the fact that you now have the residential contract, but it also tries to address some of the concerns that came up during all this discussion, like about burning and some other things. So I lay out bullet points, but I can walk you through it. The first part is definitions. So there are some new definitions, some of them tie into what's already in the contract with area. The second one, 5302, is service required. The first bullet point addresses directly our contract. It says that everyone shall be required to have city hauling. This is a big change from the existing because we didn't require hauling service. We just required that they get rid of their garbage. You know, and I think that was kind of a loophole for some. So this will basically require everybody to have a hauling, to have it picked up once a week, and that if you're living there, that's basic in legal terms, prima facie evidence that you're actually generating waste. Section D, Joe and I were discussing, we both, I don't know why, but we both seem to miss that provision, or I misread it, and I think he, you know, looked at it differently as well. And our recommendation would be to remove that, so that we can talk about it as we go through. The next section, container requirements. Just talked about either approved containers, you know, such as we have at the area contract, or for landscape waste. Also allows and keeps that provision of it being a public nuisance if, you know, it's accumulating outside. And that is further delineated in 5304, landscape, you know, how you store your yard waste and landscape waste. 5305 is new. It allows for composting, but it defines how and what you can compost. And we don't get compost piles that kind of turn into many garbage piles. There's a lot of things that are just being reiterated that we already have. There's one under disposal that you can't bury your waste, you know, bury your garbage in your yard. Burning, we already have burning, but this further delineates recreational campfires because we only have like a couple sentences in the existing. This is a little more thorough that allows.
And this is going to be out at the campground, out at the South Park? That's going to address that also?
What do you mean?
No recreational burning?
There is recreational.
There is recreational. If I get finished, this is for your outdoor campfires. So it just further delineates what you can and cannot do, but I think it's actually more beneficial because it kind of opens it up for what is allowed, not what's not allowed. The next section is license required. That goes towards, you know, the fact that everybody needs a license. We already had that, but obviously, we're going to try to reinforce that. It also brings about, we didn't have a lot of the insurance information, so now the proof of insurance will be there. Under license, it calls out again us contracting with a single for the city, a single hauling service. It calls out for what needs to be in the application for haulers. It's on the next page. And that there's a $50 fee for those haulers. That's just a licensing fee. But one of the ones we like in particular is the next section about vehicles transporting waste, so that they have to keep their trucks in good order, so they're not dumping oil on our roads and whatnot. Minimum services are provided that recycling will be picked up every week for no additional cost. That would be for commercial as well, but I think it's already kind of covered there in contract with area. Rates. One of the things you'll need to delineate is there, you'll see terms in here, residential waste and municipal waste. Residential waste is no construction, demolition-type debris. Municipal waste can have some of those materials in them. So when you see, well, what's the difference? Look under definitions, and that's the difference. It also has three provisions for customer service, that they will provide prompt, courteous, and efficient service, that we will have a point of contact, and that they will have to maintain a website. This has a nice hook to it. There's a penalty if they don't adhere to those provisions, so that if, especially the commercial. We already have in the area contract provisions that protect us for customer service, but this will also allow for, like, any other haulers for commercial. So hopefully, that'll improve customer service on both ends. And then it provides for license verification, the administrative procedure, and the penalty for not complying. So there's quite a bit in here. I'm not expecting, I was hoping, you know, we could discuss some provisions, and then obviously, my recommendation would be to chew on it. We can amend anything you'd like to see amended right now, and then bring it back.
I understand.
How very okay. I'm sorry.
Burning of leaves is sort of be able to have.
Yes, burning leaves is still allowed. Yes. This is just burning of garbage.
Can I ask a question? About what she just said?
No.
Because I didn't quite understand. Something there.
You're asking what?
Any of them. No, any of them. When she was mentioning licensing, is that for the garbage company, or is that for?
For the garbage company.
Okay. That's what we didn't catch back here, but it was for the community.
Was there anything that you wanted to point out?
No.
So we're talking about pulling this 5302 service required Ds.
Section D is a darkness.
The city requires a huge issue. You want to pull that over there, shoot?
Correct.
Should we make a motion now to exempt, or?
We could. I mean, I don't know, a motion, because if you're going to bring it back and vote on it as a whole, we can have it out of there when we bring a new version of the fifth. And then if you have any other changes.
Was there something else that she wanted to see?
No, that was it for me.
I have a question. Does Area Disposal going to only pick up the can if it's out by the road so they can use their automated truck thing to dump it in the truck?
Yes, except the two weeks surrounding Christmas and New Year's. I don't know who that's.
So our pickup in the alley that's always been won't be picked up in the alley anymore?
If I have a half a bag of garbage a week?
It'll be in the can.
And I put it out by the road, it's going to lay out by the road?
Yeah, it has to be in the can.
Then we'll pick it up if it's not.
All right.
They're going to tell us where to put these little containers that we really don't want? It's got to be in a certain position in order to show us? It just may not like regularly?
We don't have any others, unless you want to put something in here.
I don't really want sticking out the road.
A lot of cities have regulations where they have to be, like, either in the garage or up against the garage, or on the side of the house, or, you know, something like that.
I don't see them going off everybody's driveway and picking up stuff.
No, they won't.
Now, was there an exemption for elderly?
That's in the area contract. It's not an exemption. It's a reduction for senior citizens and disabled.
What is the senior citizen rate? It's a 10% discount.
28.
65.
14 and 80?
65. And it's 10%. I don't really have to do the math.
I got it.
$13.27 where everybody else is 14.75, so if that's 10%, I don't know. 10% is about 40, 15. Yeah, that sounds about right. About 10%.
I don't even know what our garbage pickup is going to be, the rate.
Area will be reaching out to everyone in the next month or two.
Well, that's not an answer. Do you not have an area?
What are you asking?
What, is it going to cost me to have area? She said she didn't know.
It was $13.
I said, I don't know what the percentage is. I said it's $13.27 for seniors 65 and older. And Area will be reaching out with every single resident, with flyers, with, I believe, I don't even know, but they do a massive outreach, and they will not start the contract until they are comfortable that everybody knows what's going on and how. So they will be reaching out to every resident.
Okay, so we're going to remove this, correct?
Yes.
And then we'll just bring this back?
Yeah. And if you have more, then you could do an amendment on the fifth. Like, if you read it further and you have concerns, you can always bring those up on the fifth and amend it.
So we should table this and dump it?
Yes.
I move to table ordinance 997, February 5th. I'll second it.
Do we call it?
No, call it, I'm sorry.
All right. McKinley?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I move to approve ordinance 998, amending chapter 78 parking schedule, loading and loading services.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
This was just brought as a request so that we can try to get the trucks out of Main Street to unload, that they'll actually go behind the buildings to unload during the day. So it's pretty cut and dry. Yeah.
So it's just saying that you can't park back at Serviceway at all?
That's the way they need it.
Just in, like, the loading and unloading zone? It does prohibit parking, but it's all in the 300 block, you know, so I don't think it's... I'm not totally familiar with the parking back there.
It just keeps them from unloading and available, right?
Yes.
Correct.
So that they have room to get back there to unload.
Anybody else have anything else?
No.
Call it.
Coffee?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
McKinley?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 999, adopting a supplemental appropriation for fiscal year 2018.
I'll second it.
As you know, we adopted the appropriation last year, but we have two unknown entities out there. It was a purchase of police cars, which we chose to do out of fund balance because it made financial sense rather than borrowing money. The second is, we had some high retirement payouts for a couple of employees, and so those are big-ticket, five-figure items that we had to come up with that I M R A F did not have the funds for, so that has to come out of the fund balance. So those are the two items, and there are funds available. It's just that when appropriations was passed, there wasn't, the number wasn't high enough. And a supplemental is a lap-dash statute if you have the funds.
Is that pure logic at all in your mind? Any other questions? Call it.
Kelly?
Yes.
McKinley?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 1000, ordinance adopting vegetarian fiscal policies.
Second. Discussion.
This is, as you remember, we adopted some investment policies, so these are just further policies that kind of dictate how we, you know, operate ourselves fiscally. There's some things in there I want to point out. Some of this will be discussed at the strategic planning, because you're going to be setting goals in, you know, how you operate and how you treat things. So for example, revenue, you know, that we will endeavor to maintain a diversified and stable revenue base, you know, that will monitor, that will pose legislation that mandates, you know, unfunded mandates, that will set fees and user charges for our enterprise funds that fully supports activities, expenditures that are within our building funds. So these are big-picture policies that, you know, kind of dictate how we operate. Debt administration. And then the big one for me is the reserve fund balance policy on the second page. GASB and GFOA typically look for a minimum of 25% fund balance. Right now, we're over 100% fund balance, so that's not an issue. However, let's say in your strategic planning, you decide to spend down some of that money for some big infrastructure projects. You want to keep 25 to 30% always in the back of your line, but you don't want to go below that. So this would have you adopting that as a policy, that you will always try to keep that as your standard. Same thing for your enterprise funds. And then cash management, this is really just kind of secondary to the investment policy. It's how we handle our cash, how we invest our money, which you've kind of already reviewed. And then the last page is accounting and financial reporting. Hopefully, we'll get to a point where between our budget and our, I always call it a CAF number, but it's your audit that we will always seek to, you know, do the best we can, and then even, you know, hopefully, maybe one day we'll, you know, apply for the excellence award. I think that's not out of the realm of possibility, so.
Explain that.
It's headed up at the GFOA. It's an excellence in financial reporting. It's kind of an award where you have a really good budget and audit. And I don't mean, yes, you're handling the money right. I mean, it's clear, it's well-defined, it's transparent, it's easily understood, it has a lot of different components to it, whether it's, you know, analysis in the beginning, and you'll start seeing that as we go through our budget workshops, the budget will look completely different. It'll be easy to read, it'll be easy to understand. So there's a lot of different components that GFOA looks for, and if you fulfill all those, you can get a certificate for excellence in financial reporting. So it's not, like I said, out of the realm. Maybe, you know, it might take a couple years, but... So this, to have these in place as one of the first steps towards, you know, doing that.
Was it dated on the court session?
February 10th. So there's nothing out of the ordinary, but if you'd like time, you can certainly play it over to the fifth to review it further.
Any other questions? Call it.
Would you want, are you approving it or letting it all go?
I don't see any problems with it, but I think it looks fine.
You just got it?
I'm okay with it.
Will this allow us to make sure that we keep that 25 to 30% in there?
Well, it kind of is saying, we're drawing a line and saying, we are putting it in writing that this is our goal that we are always going to seek to achieve, so yes.
Does it say we have to have a level of at least 20, the goal of 25%?
So that when, it kind of helps you, like, whether it's at budget time, whether it's something that has come up where you say, well, we're at 30% fund balance, do we really want to spend this money out of our fund balance because I only have 20%? It's kind of a guiding thing to remind you to always have that in the bank. And some people say, well, why have a fund balance? Well, it's like a savings account. What if the state stops giving us our money? What if, you know, we have some billing issue and we don't get, you know, our funds in the enterprise? It's a savings account, basically. It also goes towards your bond rating. You know, if you have 1 to 35%, it helps your bond rating, which then you borrow money at a lower rate. So there's a lot of different things that play.
I don't reckon you need to hold this over, do you?
No, I don't.
Kelly?
Did you say McKellum?
Kelly.
Sorry. Kelly? McKinley?
Yes.
Coffee?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Make a...
Oh, go ahead.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2018-2? No. Ordinance, sorry. Make a motion to approve ordinance 1001, amending Chapter 33, procurement of public works, supplies, and services.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Discussion.
This is a follow-up. I actually had this as part of the vegetarian fiscal policies, but Joe thought it was a good idea to separate it out because it's a little bit of a different protocol. There's a couple things that play here. One, the state legislature, as you know, you've always had 20,000 in your head as the cap for, why not for bid? They actually raised it last year to 25. So this would then align the ordinance to match that. And then, as we were looking through it, there are a couple things. What I did is, this is an ordinance in its entirety, so that you could see the whole thing. So underlined is new, crossed out is, you know, what we're suggesting to delete. So there's some changes, obviously, changing it from 20 to 25. There's one adding under the subsection 7 that just talks about, there's not a lot of use of the state bid process here, so I'd like to get that changed because it's easy, it saves a lot of money. So putting this in place, you know, that also saves time, because if you lose the state bids, you don't have to go out for bid. So that's what subsection 7 is. And then I don't think there's much change except the next to last page. And then, I don't think there's much change, except the next to last page talks about procurement, and that, you know, we will follow the proper procurement procedures, but it also asks for quite bluntly an increase in the purchasing ability of myself and staff. As you know, as a multimillion dollar corporation, it's kind of hard these days to run day-to-day on such a small amount.
Question to have?
Yes.
About the city official or employees that can't be a contractor. I'll take myself an example, I can't be a subcontractor or somebody, you ever do a job here and contract me to do something, I can't, I can't have a part of this, I like...
Yes.
Correct, yes.
I found one instance and I eliminated it. We don't do that anymore. So we're essentially just increasing from five hundred to five thousand for the public works, like? The whoever that is in general? And then twelve-five to twenty-five thousand for you? Yes. Okay. I mean, I think that makes sense, my, I mean, I would think five hundred seems ridiculous, because that's all that they can spend, I mean... It makes last, it slows everything down.
Sure, yeah, that type of approval for everything.
Right, and I think, you know, by putting all these policies in place, and also then you know that there are procedures that exist to protect, you know, the city's finances, so, and I think if there are issues, obviously, you know, let's say my communication, I mean, that'll be an issue about communication, you know, operating on a day-to-day basis.
Sure.
I know that there were previous concerns, but it just, it slows things down.
What was that about twenty-five thousand? What was that?
The state requires you to go out for bid when you spend anything above twenty thousand. Last year, the state raised that limit to twenty-five thousand.
Any other questions? Call it.
McKinley?
Yes.
Copy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Don't you care?
Okay, move to adopt resolution twenty eighteen dash two, approve the intergovernmental agreement for the Little Rock School District.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
Uh, Dr. Wilson advised me that, I guess you do this every year, this IGA agreement, it's a yearly IGA, it's to provide at their request, so, you know, we're not going to go out there every time we think it's, they have to call. Although I will commend Fred, I guess he went over there last week sometime, it was really icy in the United City of Manhattan, some basketball game or something, and he went ahead and did it, and I think that was a good decision. But anyway, she requested that we discuss this, you know, potentially renewing it. In the past, it's been two hundred and fifty, I felt it is my recommendation to make it a little less, I mean, it, it costs us less than a hundred dollars for the salt per ton, so it certainly doesn't, you know, ten, fifteen minutes, you know, to run through there, and, and I just think it's a good, a neighborly thing to do, is to lower that cost, but it's up to you. She would like, if you're okay with it, to, you know, vote on it tonight, because she would like to discuss it, there's people waiting. But I told her that even though it's one fifty, that there's a draft, and that you could choose to keep it at two fifty, so, and she understands. I mean, it's crazy.
Anything else? Call it.
Copy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
McKinley?
Yes.
Don't you care?
Section four, city managers report.
Um, just that our focus groups for strategic plan are Thursday, I would respectfully request that you not attend. I advised councilman Tuskory this morning, that I'm not going to be there, they don't want any city officials there, so the attendees can feel comfortable, it's open and frank. We will have a consultant here in the office to talk, do like a pre-workshop with the department heads on that same day, and then your workshop is on the school district on February tenth. So, um, things should go well. Hopefully, weather related, I will advise that if there is bad weather, there's some that may not be able to attend, and so we probably would reschedule, because I think it's very important to have all of you there.
Sure.
That's all I have, any other questions?
Any other questions? Move to adjourn. Second. Call it.
Kelly?
Yes.
McKinley?
Yes.
Tuskory? Copy?
Yes.
Don't you care?